July 29, 19.
Oh.
Roll call, please.
Where's my roll call stuff?
Uh-oh. We've got a glitch already.
I don't see it.
What was in front of mine?
Uh, Mo Quas- uh, Mo LaRosa.
Here we go. She's running over.
This isn't me. So there I am. Mo LaRosa.
Present.
Mary Ann Turner. President. Kelly Davis.
Present.
Kathy Plopper.
Here.
Andrew Urbana Witz.
Here.
Charlie Master Birdy.
Here.
Robert Quesnicki.
Here.
Richard Strony.
Here.
Everybody's here. Somebody keep track.
Fire evacuation, two means of egress out of the council chambers. Uh, the first one is to our left, your right. Go through the double doors, first door on the right, down the stairs, out into the parking lot. The second one is in front of us, behind you folks. Uh, go off the double doors behind you, take a right or take a right, go down to the parking lot. Uh, stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a town attorney's report tonight. Do we have anything from?
Yes, you got something in your packet this evening?
Oh, yeah.
So this was clarifications that had been requested quite a few months ago about ZB- ZBA review of applications for dealers and repair licenses.
With the K7s and stuff like that.
So I think basically the questions that you had asked specifically were answered.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Number two, we talked about it being an existing license to a non- new, non-relative owner. So we've had people come in front of us who are neither of those, which means, in my opinion, they should be getting a site plan review. And number four, it says, the factors are within the ZBA's preview when reviewing an application for a local location approval, and I said, okay. And there's some other document, I made a note here, it says, well, where is it?
Right, so previously, the town attorneys had given you a checklist as to what the items are that you can review.
Right, schools, churches, theaters, playhouses, public gatherings, intersections, all that jazz.
Right, traffic safety, yep.
Yes, but they did discuss the thing that I keep saying is new facilities require either a site plan approval or a special use permit from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And it's not against the rules for them to go to them first and then come to us for the K7 review. And I would suggest, through the chairman, that if we get another opportunity to have a K7, and it's a new, what's the words we're using? New, non-relative owner, that it should go to site plan review through P&amp;Z first. And then if they're happy little clams.
So when you're saying new, non-relative, meaning it's a brand-new operation, or it's just a new owner?
They could be in a place where they're coming in to a place that was a something, but they're new. They're new. We've had new, we just had one, it was new. So all I'm saying is we should.
So if it's a facility, I think what she's saying is if it's a facility that is not being transferred of ownership or going from relative to relative, then we should be handling that as a new operation. I know PZC does that. Um, if a store when it was in somewhere, but another store comes in, they still look at a site plan review for them.
Okay.
Um, if a auto body shop comes in somewhere and leaves, and another auto body shop, two years later decides to come in, PZC is still going to do a site plan review on them. Correct?
I'm not sure that that's, I don't believe that that's true.
So if that's not true, using auto body shop as an example, then they may not have a downdraft booth, they may not have fire procession per, um, systems in their paint booth, or they may, or their paint room.
If the, if.
And we can't, we can't ask them about that.
If they're going to propose something that was not previously approved, then we have a right to cite them if they put that in, or we have a right to require a site plan approval if they put that in.
No, it's not if they put it in, Laurie. If a body shop is going in, they must follow the 2019 rules, and those things must be in.
Right, if they, if that's what they're proposing, and it was never proposed before in the previous location approval, then yeah, absolutely, it's got to go from, from square one.
What you, what she's saying is, if it was a body shop five years ago.
Okay, legally?
Legally.
Okay.
The body shop closed.
Okay.
They changed the rules for body shops in 2019. So now if somebody else, if I come in and say, I want to open that body shop back up, well, it was already previously a body shop. But it should go through PZC, through site plan review, because the rules and laws have changed.
And they do that.
So even though it was once a body shop, it wouldn't have those legality things done that it needs done. So if you just say, well, you were a body shop before, go ahead, put a body shop in. Well, now you've kind of said, okay, put a body shop in, they don't have, they don't have downdrafts, they don't have all this stuff that's required.
Yeah, they'll still need to meet the, the local and state requirements of the use.
You're asking them to come in front of us, using the one that just came in front of us, and use 1992 conditions. And those conditions would not have been the conditions, in my opinion, per P&amp;Z, if they had done a site plan review. And since this document that you just handed to me says, however, it may be more practical to go first to Planning and Zoning Commission, item number two per Chris Bronson, 2002, I am strongly advising that. So in the future, if K7s come, and they're not, family, family, they're new, news new, go to Plan and Zone first.
So I do believe that most applicants will come before the zoning board of appeals first, because if they can't get the location approval, they don't want to spend all the money on the engineering and purchase of the site. So it's kind of which comes first, the chicken.
Which puts us in a position, Laurie, where you're saying, we cannot review it at all.
I'm not putting you in that position, the state is.
Right, so.
The state statutes put you in that position.
So we, we asked for an attorney's.
I don't agree with them.
We asked for an attorney's opinion, and the attorney's opinion states that they should possibly go to PZC first.
Okay.
We're not saying everybody, we're saying site, you know, automotive review.
If it's a new use.
Right.
New means new person.
It's a new business.
Unless they want to try another shot at this.
I'll discuss it with the Planning and Zoning Commission. What were you, um, pointing to? Where are we? Says here, so what are we reading from here? So this is from Mark Brants, who is a reputable land use attorney that teaches at Connecticut Association of Zoning Enforcement Officials, dated April 2, 2018, and he's talking about car sales and repair location approvals. And then he finally says, "A certificate of approval cannot be issued by the board for a location where an auto repair shop or dealership would be in violation of the zoning regulations," which is good. However, as stated above, obtaining a certificate of approval is a state matter, not a local zoning matter, so the application for the permit itself is not reviewed by the board. Instead, it must first be reviewed and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission." So that's what you're, you're agreeing with.
So that's, that's what we're asking to have done.
For, for a new application.
Correct.
We're not talking about a transfer, we're talking for a new application.
If it's, if it's a father transferring to a son, or relative transfer, they're already there.
I think that that's, that's the difference of our understanding here, is because if it's a new application, it's a new application, doesn't matter who it is. If it's a transfer of a non-owner, or a, a non.
Well, I think the problem we're having is, the last one.
That's not a new application.
The last one that came in front of us was a new application.
That was a transfer.
Right here on number two, an existing license to a new, non-relative owner.
Okay.
The people who came in front of us the last time were non-relatives. So all I'm saying, we shouldn't be looking at 1992 conditions for something in 2019.
The question there is whether the ZBA is required to hold a public hearing for the application to transfer an existing license to a new, non-relative owner. The answer was no, you are not required to hold of, of the hearing.
Except for the next part.
Has the authority to waive the hearing.
Keep going.
Okay, "For applications to transfer the license to a new owner for previously approved location." Uh, the Director of Development Services has noted that the most municipalities do not have a hearing for this type of transfer, but simply list them on ZBA's agenda as an item for discussion. So that does not say it has to go back to Planning and Zoning.
The last one we had, Laurie, was not a body shop. It came to us as if it was going to be a body shop. The plan said it was a body shop till it got Xed out. Okay? All I'm saying is.
I, I believe that that body shop was just on the plans, I, from the previous owner.
Then, and, no, you, you, we're not going to have this argument, but you went to the lawyer, and you asked for an opinion, I read it, this is how I interpret it, if somebody shows up the next time, and it's, it's got 1990, 92 conditions on it, or anything that's not current, I'm probably going to have to ask you more questions.
Okay, fair enough.
Any other questions on the attorney's report?
I make a motion to move old business after approval in minutes, number nine.
Motion made by Mary Ann, seconded by Robert Quesnicki, any discussion? Sense of none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? None, the motion is carried. The legal notice, please.
Journal inquirer. Uh, let's see. "The Enfield Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 29, 19, at 7:00 PM in the Council Chambers Town Hall, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following. ZBA 2019-07-02, 98 Prospect Street, multiple variances, application to Section 6.10.1, lot in bulk requirements for industrial I, I1, zone property to vary minimum impervious surface from the required 66% to 100%. Section 6.10.2, hold on, we're not, this is on the agenda, this isn't the first one. Do you want to read the first one?
Just read them, just read them both, and.
Okay. 6.10.2, additional setback and buffer requirements subsection A to vary the minimum loading area from the required 50 feet of the right-of-way of any street abutting a residential district to zero feet, subsection B to vary the required 100-foot buffer abutting to a residential district to zero-foot buffer, subsection C to vary the required performance bond oversight to eliminate the performance bond requirement, subsection D to vary the required parking of trucks in the open, in the open within 150 feet of a residential district to zero feet, section 6.3, 0.2, additional activities limited to enclosed buildings and limited outdoor storage provisions to vary the rear outdoor storage location requirement to allow for outdoor storage on any portion of the property, section 10.10.2, parking standards to vary the required one parking space per 1,250 square feet of gross leasable area for warehouse distribution stage, wholesale, mail order establishment to eliminate the parking requirement, section 10.10.7, parking area setbacks and landscape standards to vary subsection A landscape set requirement to eliminate the landscape setback requirement, subsection B parking lot landscaping to eliminate the parking lot landscaping requirement, and subsection 10.20, landscape standard subsection 4D, buffer yard to vary the required minimum buffer yard of 100 feet to eliminate the buffer yard requirement. Town of Enfield owner David Weeks, applicant MAP 021, Lot 0020, industrial I, I1 zone. ZBA number 2019-07-08, 0 Oliver Road, MAP 047, Lot 0002, and MAP 047, Lot 0007, variance application table 6.10.1, lot in bulk requirements for the industrial I, I1 zone property to vary minimum frontage from the required 200 feet to plus or minus 72 feet for access to a legal rear lot of record. Maria Apresi, Maria and Elliot, Robert and Kevin Apresi, owners Julian Bachwinski, applicant MAP 047, Lot 002, 302, and MAP 047, Lot 0007, industrial I, I1 zone, dated this 19th day of July, Maurice LaRosa, Chairman, Mary Ann Turner, Secretary.
Will the applicant for Oliver Road come forward, please? While the applicant comes forward, let me read this for you. A variance can be granted where such grant will not affect the overall purpose of the zoning ordinance, and where strict interpretation of the ordinance will result in hardship. A hardship exists when the zoning ordinance uniquely affects a parcel of land differently from other properties, and where use of the property or reasonable use of the land would be impossible without the variance. Self-imposed or financial hardships cannot by law be considered for reasons for granting the variance. State and name and address for the record, please.
My name's Julian Bachwinski, and my address is 21 Grist Mill Lane, Hampden, Mass.
Okay, and the floor is yours.
Okay, so I'm asking for a zoning variance for Lot 47-2 on 0 Oliver Road, uh, from 200 feet to go to 72 feet. And I plan on, after purchasing the property, if this goes through, to combine both lots into one.
Combine how many lots?
47-2 and 47-7 into one lot.
Okay, so explain what your need for the variance is.
So I have to, I don't have 200 feet. In I1 zone property, you need 200 feet of, uh, frontage, and there's 72 there. I can't get into Lot 47-7 because it's landlocked without the access.
Okay.
So Lot 47-2 would be used strictly for access.
You know what these pictures are?
Hmm?
What are these?
Well, I know that was. What are, what are the pictures we're looking at, your, do you know?
I just gave that to Planning after I marked out what they wanted me to mark out. I can. Those are just the lines of Lot 47-2. I'm not sure exactly what pictures you're looking at. Yeah, those are just the lines of the property. Just so you understand that, um, I'm not sure if you guys went out there and looked at it, some of the neighbor is using part of that lot. So it might look like there's less there, but really, a good amount of where they're parking is that lot. Yeah, yep. And that, that picture there is actually Lot 47-7.
All right. Anything else you want to tell us about the project?
That's pretty much it.
Okay. Any questions of the board?
I'm curious about the, the question, you said it's landlocked. Obviously, it's not landlocked, you got this, this 47-2.
But I can't use it for access because I need 200 feet for I1.
What are you doing in there?
It's going to be storage for equipment.
Can you tell me, Laurie, did the mailing proofs come in? Because I wrote in my packet.
I'm sorry?
Never mind, she answered.
They did come in after.
And there was a question about public water and sewer available. Is it?
Those comments, um, aren't going to be received until it goes to Planning and Zoning.
I see from the document that Maria, and I'm probably going to pronounce her name wrong, Apresi owns both properties.
Yeah, yep.
So why didn't she just link them together?
Beyond me, she's out of the country at this point. She lives in Canada, so.
So it looks like there's other family members connected to this property.
Yeah, I, I don't know how they have that distributed, she's the one that's dealing with, the realtor. I don't know, to be honest. I think there's three other people on, there's different people on each of the lots.
So whether then it's an I1 zone behind the, that bigger piece, it's an I1 zone.
Yes, yep.
To the staff, are these, are they farming it now? And using that right-of-way, of 72 to get to that back piece?
I, I don't know what the current use is, quite honestly.
Well, we know that by the assessors, they're only paying farming rates. So I was just curious if they were farming.
If that's the case, if you, you think that they're in the 490 program, they would have to pay back the back taxes that they didn't pay then, if they're going to sell it for development. But if they're, they're just farming it, then they're just farming it, so.
Raquel, can you make sure you make a note of that, since that's new information to me?
The record show it's in the 490 forest program.
So what's that?
So it means it's a managed forest, and a forest, a state forester is running a management plan on it.
So what happens if it becomes the new business? Will they do what they just said?
Then it gets kicked out, right, and the assessment goes back up.
And will, what she just said, they have to pay the back taxes? Or they would just start from that point forward?
It depends when it was enrolled, I don't.
Right, yeah. Into the assessor's program?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, just to try to clarify, just in real brief terms, this, the, the rear lot is a lot of, legal lot of record that is completely landlocked. The, the little lot along Oliver Road is not a legal lot of record. If it was, then he wouldn't, this gentleman wouldn't be here, he could have automatically just used that as, as the access. Because it's not a legal lot of record, we, he needed to seek the variance for the minimum that he has of 72 feet for frontage.
What do you mean it's not a legal lot of record?
It was not created by subdivision or any other means that are legal by state statutes. It's just a remaining lot, it's just remaining land from somebody.
Right, so why wouldn't he be able to put a driveway in?
Because he's combining the lots and doesn't have.
But what if he does not combine the lots?
Then he can't get to the lot.
He can't just put a driveway in, if he purchases that lot, he can't just put a driveway in with nothing?
He may exceed impervious coverage for that zone, depending upon how wide he proposes the road to be, but that's more of a planning and zoning concern versus.
On the front lot.
Uh, zoning board of appeals at this moment.
So we, we debated this back and forth.
The, the problem I have with this, and, and we've done this, and I'm going to go to past practice, is we've not dealt with a variance until they get the lot combined. Because you're, you're asking for variances that may, may or may not be needed later, because you're going to change the property. So, you know, if I'm looking at it right now, you're asking me to find a hardship for two different properties, um, which I may be able to find for one and maybe not the other. But it would be different if you were to come to, you know, if it were, the application came to us altogether. And we've done that before with the gas station up on Route 5 and, and another one. And realistically, what the, what the customer's wanting to do would better us issuing a variance if it were together.
I, I absolutely understand your point.
Otherwise, you're asking us for a variance that may or may not be needed, we're not just here to give out a variance.
So.
Or, or at least, or at least if they were both under common ownership, and then we could condition the approval that the merger happened, but they're not under common.
But they're not going to be until there's, so, so he can't come into Planning and Zoning with an application unless he gets this variance. The owner's not necessarily, um, going to combine these lots until such time as there's something to combine them for. Now, the.
The question.
The, the, a second, um, the front lot, you may not build on that lot currently, and you may not build on that lot ever, as far as a structure, because it is not a legal lot of record, you can never put a structure on there. Now, or in the, or if it's, if it's combined, it still won't meet the minimum. Yeah, the, the front lot.
47-2.
One is the front one.
Yeah, whatever, one, the, the little lot.
No, no, 47-2.
Right.
It's 47-2.
Okay, 47-2.
And then 47-1 belongs to the state of Connecticut.
Right, so I, so the back lot will never be, unless somebody sells them some access someplace else, this is the only remaining logical place for somebody to seek access to have the, the rear lot. But the front lot is not a legal lot of record, it was never created except for by just remaining land of some cuts and the, and the division of the highway. So it's just remaining land, it can never be built on. So the hardship is, is that we, that, that the front lot can't be built on without the other one, and the back lot can't be built on without frontage. So if you can subject this to, if you, it should decide to grant the variance for frontage, you could, you could subject it to that, that, that front lot shall only be used for access to the rear. You have that right.
But you also, we give variances our forever.
So that, if those properties never get merged together?
They'll never be built.
No, that's not true. Once we grant a variance for eliminating the frontage for that front property, we give them, somebody permission to build.
Something.
We're, we're taking away from a lot of that. That, that's why I'm, I'm not real quick to jump and say, okay, let's do it that way.
Well, based on the applicant's narrative, where he says that he is planning on merging the lot, and in the staff report, with the planning submission requirement prior to filing the variance on the land record, Planning has recommended that the lots be merged before he proceeds on forward, so that will ensure that the lots are together.
But once the variance is granted, nothing the applicant, nothing PZC, nothing your staff, nothing anybody says matters.
Right, but the variance.
Once the variance is granted, it's granted.
It's granted, but it's not legal until it's filed in the office of the town clerk, and therefore, we've suggested that the applicant provide us with a map that shows the lots merged together, if not.
But you can't, if we grant it tonight.
You can put conditions on there.
If we grant it tonight, we can't prevent him tomorrow from going and filing that on land record.
Well, you can add the conditions that the map be filed merged, so prior to the filing of the variance, to ensure, um, your concerns.
The, the goal here would be to.
See, we.
Provide access to a landlocked property and let it be used.
We postponed and pushed off the last one that came to us that was not merged, was because we were told we couldn't put conditions on it that made them merge the property.
We do have new legal opinion saying that you are able to add conditions if it's in harmony with the regulations and the intent of.
Right, I, I understand, we've always been able to have conditions. But one of those conditions was not a condition that we could force them to merge property. We dealt with that with Pride up on Route 5. So we postponed them for a while, until they actually merged their properties. Because then it became, once they merged them, it actually became an interstate thing.
Well, yes, they were on the border.
Mr. Chairman, I think that, if I may, the, the issue up there is the same issue here, but it's the ownership issue that was preventing the merger.
Right.
At the Pride site, there was four, three or four different owners, right?
Mm-hmm.
And the same thing here, these are two different owners, you can't condition on two different owners, there needs to be a unity of. There needs to be a unity of title at least.
They might be the same owners. I'm not, I know her name is on.
It's on both.
They didn't appear to be the same when I looked, so I would just state that for the record. Without having copies of the deeds in front of us to know for sure, I don't think we can condition.
What if we don't merge the lots?
Then you don't need a variance.
If you don't merge the lots and we grant you a variance, now we have a lot that we can't legally build on that we all of a sudden give somebody permission to build on.
Yeah, we wouldn't be building on it anyways.
But that's to you.
You sell the property tomorrow, the next guy builds on it.
Right, okay, I understand.
It's, we have to look at all of that. We can't just take somebody's word for not, I'm not saying that you're lying to us, but we have to have proof of what's happening.
So if you granted a variance tonight without the merging, to allow an access to go over this property and they've never been merged and they don't get built, then the only thing that could ever happen on that lot is that you could put an access to the rear property. You still can't build on it. You still will never be able to put a house on it, any other structure.
It doesn't meet the lot and bulk requirements.
It doesn't, it's not a legal lot of record and it doesn't, you'd have to go through subdivision requirements.
Are we in an argument?
No, 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 I'm trying to clarify.
That would be true if we were to give a variance for impervious surfaces. That's not what he's here for. He's here to get rid of the frontage rule.
So he could utilize it as access.
If we get rid of the frontage rule for that property, then we're, he could put a building up because we've gotten rid of the frontage.
Because it's not a legal lot of record, therefore you may not build on it until it becomes a subdivisible lot.
Why can't it become a legal lot of record?
Because it's too small. It won't meet any minimum requirements.
So the next question is, how do you make sure that whatever happens and he becomes a millionaire and moves off to Tallahassee, we've just put this thing here forever. There could be anything built back there because it's an I-1.
No, the only thing that could be built in the back lot, provided they have access to the lot, is whatever is approved by planning and zoning.
For I-1.
I-1.
For I-1. Well, that's going to be true whether you grant this or not. The only thing that could ever go back there is what's permitted by planning and zoning. This is just giving frontage so you could get to the site. That's it.
Majority of the property is wetland.
Yep.
So the only, there's only four acres that's even usable up against I-91.
And wetlands, of course, will also play into this.
So we're, we're not asked for, there's no variance being asked for the bigger property, forty-seven.
Yes, there is.
It is.
We are being asked for a variance for the larger property as well?
Yes, there's a variance for that as well.
There is. Okay, and is that frontage, that's the part that's abutting the first property, forty-seven-two?
Well, there is, the problem with the second parcel is it's landlocked, so there is no roadside frontage.
Okay, so that's the variance that would be granted.
It has 120 feet of roadside frontage and it has none.
Gotcha. So we would be, in essence, we're being asked zero, to reduce it to zero because there is no frontage. And then number two, to reduce the frontage requirements for the front lot, forty-seven-two, and to reduce that frontage. And the only thing, whether we, if we separated out the larger property and we were only granting a variance on the front part for divide these two, there's, in a thousand years, there can't, anything, nothing can be built on that front property because it is an unofficial lot. The only time it can become official is if it's merged with the larger property.
Or the one next door.
Or the one next door. Or the one next door.
All right, so, or you take, or the state gives up some of their property.
But if you merge it, then you lose the variance because now you're changing it.
No.
Variance goes forever.
It goes with the land.
What I would, I think because it isn't merged, we were talking about the zero lot, the zero frontage for the large lot.
So I had a question earlier in the day, Raquel, where I asked you what the road width would be for a road.
The roads are typically 24 feet.
So we got 72 here.
Not at the top. We've got about a 49-foot opening there.
You're just telling me it's 24?
Right.
Four is still less than 49.
Yes, I know. So it's typically 24 and then you start adding sidewalks and.
You're not adding sidewalks here. Don't, don't.
I'm just saying, you start adding things.
Don't noodle, Lori.
Apparatus, you know, for a rear lot, you usually have a little bit more so the fire apparatus could get up through there safely.
So maybe you need to get me some more information.
The smaller parcel in front is .33 acres, which is equivalent to 14,374 square feet. In order to have a buildable lot there in an I-1 zone, you need a minimum of 40,000 square feet. So the first lot where he's asking for the variance will never be buildable because it does not meet the lot and bulk requirements as found on six.
Unless it merges with the guy next door.
That's a different scenario.
Right, and so, Mr. Chairman, can we just, can we just move forward a little bit? Keep moving.
I'm not.
I'm not here to have a debate with the.
So, but what is the question?
I have no questions of you.
So how can we clarify this because it's.
We didn't ask you to.
I figured that was my job to try. Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else you want to share with us?
Do you have any other questions?
I don't.
Not at the moment.
Any questions from the board?
I have one question and it gets back to sort of some of the ground we've covered, but just have you ever asked them if they'd be willing to quitclaim that front parcel into the same type of ownership structure as the rear parcel so they'd match?
This lady is interested in getting rid of the properties as quick as possible. She does not want to have anything to do with it. It was difficult enough agreeing on a price.
If you approached her, if you were to table this and approach her and say, look, no matter what you do with these properties, you're going to have this issue.
I got the answer of, you get what you pay for. That's what I got the answer of from the realtor. And I'm on a timeframe here too. Because our town is kicking our business out because we're, we grew out of a residential business, out of a residential area. Our trucks are, so this is why we're relocating.
Just one question for the staff. If a variance is granted for a lot, call it Lot 1, and then it merges with Lot 2, does that variance carry over into this new lot or is that a new entity?
It does, excuse me, the variance runs with the land, so yes, it would, it would carry over to the new lot. Say, let's say it was merged with number 19.
Right.
It would vary, it would go with that, but it would be meaningless.
So to clarify, so that has 72 feet and let's say the other lot, you know, the property there with the houses has 1,000 feet and we grant a variance for less than 72 feet. Where's, that whole new property then would have a road frontage of less than 72 feet?
Seventy-two feet. For one lot in a division, if it was two acres.
Yes, but remember, we're talking point to point.
Right, right, that's what I'm asking. So if we say, okay, it's 10 feet is a variance. And let's say the scenario is with that Lot 19 to get combined, is that now a new lot have the variance of 10 feet of, so they could.
Well, I think yes, it would.
Yeah.
However, you have the right to clarify that the variance is strictly for the use through, for the use of the front property for thoroughfare to the back property. It's not, it would not, and if you did that, you would, it would not go with number 19 should they merge.
And would we further, like, would there be conditioned on that this variance is strictly only if it's combined, if it's combined or merged with this back property?
Yes, you could do that.
And no other property and it's null and void then?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't think you can go that far, Commissioner Quinney, and I think we need to be careful how we tread.
I just, yeah, no, I'm just clarifying, getting the information. Thank you.
Commissioner Urbanowitz, I do have the deeds in the file. There are multiple deeds. If you wanted to review it, we do have that for your inspection as well.
Sure, if you want to present them to us.
For now, we'll have you take a seat in the audience. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor or against the application? Come forward, please.
Lori Longy, 1427 Enfield Street, and I own seven properties in this immediate area. I also have something I wanted to pass out to the board if that was okay.
Sure. Make sure the staff gets a copy for the record.
Town of Enfield owned it. I wanted to be able to give you a little history. Of course, I was sitting on my hands back there because I had a little bit more history of this parcel. Mary Weiner actually owned both parcels. And she wanted to develop the parcels back many years ago and was denied. And so when she died, she willed the front parcel to the town of Enfield. And the back parcel was kept to her nieces and nephews and the heirs. And then the town of Enfield, once they received it, they, this Maria, approached the town and asked if the town would be willing to give them the parcel so that their parcel in the back would not be landlocked. So the town sent out an 824 to the planning and zoning and they complied and said that they would turn over this piece to the family so that that piece in the back would not be landlocked. And there was the referral from the town manager's office. I remember this as I was a member of planning and zoning and my, I was off like two weeks before this actually came to our board. The intent of the front parcel was just to be given to the owners so that they would have this access for the rear. So technically, the parcel wouldn't be landlocked. The town on 11/26 turned the deed over to the family. This variance goes with the land and your decisions guidelines clearly state that ZBA can vary a small, a minimum adjustment. That's what your rules say, minimum, to accomplish this purpose. The request is for 200 feet of frontage. 10% would be 20 feet. This is 64%. It's more than half. And so I don't feel it complies with the minimum adjustment that your body says that you can adjust. If it was one feet, five feet, 10 feet, even the 20 feet and it was under 10%, I think that possibly you could give the variance. But with the adjustment being a 64% variance, it's really not a minimum adjustment. This will injure the neighborhood and the town because it opens up all parcels on not meeting the regulations just to come in and get a variance. There are plenty of undeveloped industrial parcels that don't need a variance if he wants to move to Enfield. The owner of the front parcel could easily, and I'm glad Attorney Urbanowitz said, easily add the names to the deed. But in her letter to the town, she clearly said she owned both parcels. And that's why I made that copy of that, because she has control over both parcels. She was the executor of the estate. She gave him permission to represent him, it was okay to come here. So she has controls over both parcels. So if she really wanted to, she could quitclaim the other parties onto this, onto this deed. So I feel like when they're saying it's different owners, it's truly misleading to this board. And I never found a survey. I did go down to the town to look at the file today and I never found an actual survey. And you don't even really know if there's no survey, if it's actually 72 feet and it's 49 feet in the back or if it's 68 feet or if it's 100 feet. So without an actual real survey, you don't even really know what you're varying. So that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Thank you, Ellen. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak in favor or against the application?
Hi, my name is Jeff Tingley. I own a couple pieces of property in town. I've owned a business in town now, I think, for 34, 35 years. And I'm actually here, the company that sits at the property next to this access is called Calden Refractors. And I recently went through something. I own this old Sterling Machine building and I went through an awful lot of headaches with a proposed project next to us. And the fellow that owns Calden Refractors is away. And I'm here, I know him well. And after going through what I went through with my building and my property and trying to protect our interests, I think it would be important to protect a taxpayer in town that's been here for a long time, paying taxes, sitting, doing the right thing. And I guess he's saying that they're parking on their land. I don't know if you physically saw the site, but the highway is like right next to it. In fact, more recently, a Jeep had flipped over and came down on that property, if you, yeah, you recall that. So I'm here to say, can we slow down in the interest of a paying taxpayer that's been in town for years and years? I think after what I've been through with trying to protect a building, here's a fellow's, if Kerry Calden's his name, he's owned, he's been there as long as I can remember. You know, the folks before me, the Caravellas that own Sterling Machine, were going to level the building because it costs 18,000 a year in taxes. And it was a consideration because it was empty and stayed emptied so long. And I can't tell you what we've put into that building to make it a viable business. But when this abutting proposed business came to town and it seemed that our concerns were kind of put to the side, I was kind of offended by that. Firstly, I'm a lifelong resident of Enfield. Only until recently did I move to Summers, but I've lived in Enfield my whole life and ran a business for 35 years and then we bought that building. And it's, it's, it's cost us a lot. And I, to some degree, felt that our concerns were put to the side so that this other business might come in. So much so, the stream that ran through the property was blockaded. And through a series of events, I now own that piece of property. But that shouldn't have happened that way. And so because Kerry's away, because he's a fellow businessman whom I respect very much, I think it's important to say, hey, let's stop what we're doing here. This is abutting him. They're saying that perhaps he's parking, they're parking on this fellow's property. If he has large equipment, the other thing is how is the equipment going to access that? That 91 is right there. You have to make a, quite a turn, tight turn to even access through there. But more than anything else, I'm here to try to protect a taxpayer in town that's been here for a long time. So, and listen, Enfield needs businesses and we should welcome all the business we can. I just don't think we should hurt other townspeople that have been here for a long time paying their taxes and also other. time, paying their taxes, and also other businesses that have been in town for a long time, paying their taxes. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Sir, could I just clarify? Are you talking about the owner of number 19, Oliver?
I'm talking about Calden Refractors.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else in the, wishing to speak in favor or against?
Good evening. Anthony Spazarini, 40 Post Office Road, Enfield. I think that it's such a big variance that you shouldn't consider it at all. You're going to start an industrial business on the wrong foot, it's going to end up on the wrong foot. And that's all I have to say. You could see it already happening. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Lori Longy, 1427 Enfield Street. While I was sitting there, there is another possibility, another scenario. If you grant the variance for the road frontage, you could put a cul-de-sac street in, that rear part could have its frontage based on that. It's a cost thing. People don't want to spend the money. They're trying to come here, get a variance, and make it less expensive for them. So I just think that you really should think about, since it runs with the land, there's a lot of things that could happen with it. Thank you.
Before you go, could you just back up and explain that again? Say it again? The other option is the cul-de-sac?
So if you have the 72 feet, you only need 24. I thought it was 50 feet, but let's say it's 25 feet. For a road, you just put a road up and you get your frontage. There's your frontage on your road. But you have to put the cost of the road in.
Right.
That's where you can get your road.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else speak in favor or against?
Karen LaPlante, 166 North Maple Street. I believe on the 824, I'm chair of the Conservation Commission, but we haven't discussed this recently. But it's my recollection that the reason, during the 824, I believe we said it would be okay for the town to sell that or give that to the people behind so that a road can be created for both of those parcels that are back there. And that way, they would be able to develop it, and it would be frontage if they put a road in there. Because I believe there's two parcels there, and I don't know if we're talking about both of those parcels or not. But I think there's another parcel further to the north of the original landlocked piece that's also landlocked, but I'm not 100% sure. So I haven't looked at the map recently, and I don't know who owns the separate pieces. But there are a lot of wetlands. But I believe our intent was if the town, you know, got rid of that piece of land, that it would be used as a road into those properties, those industrial properties, which would then provide for additional development. But you can check the minutes and see what they say. My memory isn't as good as it used to be.
All right, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor or against the application? Would the applicant like to come forward again? I've got a couple questions, actually. First of all, does anybody else have any questions?
Maybe.
Not for the applicant. So would, one of the people that spoke mentioned putting a road in. Have you looked into that?
No, but that would probably not be an option.
Why not?
Because of budget.
Okay.
I wish I could say yes.
Understand that if there's another way to perform what you're trying to perform, then that's the way that you should go with it, other than seeking the variance. And finances is not a reason to not do it that way.
Let me ask you a question. You had mentioned if, can you explain the impervious surface? What is an impervious surface to the town?
Impervious surface is blacktop, concrete.
Okay, so if we put gravel down, would I need a variance for a gravel road?
I don't know what's needed for a road.
Well, I would think so. You're going to have to follow the rules.
You're going to have to follow the rules, the requirements for, if you were actually putting in a road, and I'm not talking a driveway to the back lot, I'm talking an actual road that would be a public road, that's a 30-foot wide pavement width, but right-of-way width of 60 feet. So you'd need a variance for that. So you really can't put a road in because...
There's not enough room to put a road because of drainage.
There's only 49 feet at the pinch point between the two properties, so it doesn't meet the minimum requirements of a right-of-way. So you cannot put a road in unless you sought a variance. You could put a driveway in, but you cannot put in a public road.
But it's going to be a public business. So people are going to drive down a public driveway.
They're going to drive down a private driveway. It'll just be, it'll be like a rear lot.
And the equipment that we have are pickup trucks and small trailers. They're not large tractor trailers.
Yes, but what other things do you have in the landscape business?
Trailers and pickup trucks.
But if he...
We're a maintenance, maintenance.
So if he didn't put in a blacktop driveway?
He could put in a blacktop driveway. He can't put in a road.
If he did not put in a blacktop driveway? He doesn't need any variance or anything for impervious surface. He's just going to use a dirt road or gravel road.
It would be gravel with a small 20-foot concrete curtain to knock any material so it doesn't go into the road.
So something like Millings or something of that nature?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be permitted.
So he wouldn't need a variance for the front property, then?
The front property, that we are seeking frontage, he's seeking variance from the frontage requirements of the industrial zone for the lot itself. This has nothing to do with access as far as whether it's a right-of-way road or a private drive. He is just seeking the fact that there is not 200 feet of frontage along the road for a lot to be developed. What goes back there is going to be determined by planning and zoning. It could be this gentleman, it could be another gentleman, or a woman, or something completely different. All the variance is to determine whether or not you could seek that variance of the frontage requirements such that a access drive of some sort could go to the back of the property.
Okay, we've got it.
Any other questions? Nothing, none? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. Hang on, I got to find the right words for this.
Here's your...
I make a motion to approve 2019-07-08-0 Oliver Road, MAP 047, Lot 0002, and MAP 047, Lot 007, variance application table 6.10.1, lot and bulk requirements for an industrial I-1 zone property to vary minimum frontage from the required 200 feet to plus or minus 72 feet for access to a legal rear lot of record. Maria Apprizzi, Maria and Elliot and Robert and Kevin Apprizzi, owners Julian Bachwinski, applicant MAP 047 slash Lot 002, MAP 47, Lot 007, Industrial 1, Zone in accordance with reference plan. All proposed work is to include materials shown and discussed at the 729 regular meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, as detailed in any samples or sample sheets submitted to the applicant file, any elevations, any photographs submitted, and as discussed at the public hearing, ZBA 2019-07-08. Any revision of the motion, if applied, will be listed below under revisions to text.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Made by Mary Ann, seconded by Andrew. Discussion. Go ahead, Charlie.
Question.
You're jumping out of your seat.
If the owner was so intent on getting a variance, why didn't she combine the properties before?
We don't know that, but...
So...
The issue comes because they're not combined.
So we could actually table this to give them a chance to combine it?
We can't. He has the option. And I did ask the applicant that.
We can't table it?
Well, we could table it, but not to, you know, we would have to have a reason for it. And he expressed no desire to go back to the owner and doctor.
This, to me, sounds like a financially imposed hardship. The property is not causing a problem in the purest sense. And I really do have concerns that we do not know how big or wide or long this piece of strip is. And when we make a ZBA variance, it's forever for whoever may come down the pike in the future. So that means anything, anything. It has nothing to do with just this particular applicant. It's anything. And I'm really hard-pressed to make this decision, and I really have to take into consideration, and that they're absolutely right, is we do not have the right to waive such grandness at times. We need to look at things each time. And this is a major thing. Now, are there other opportunities? Sure, maybe you get the property next door, something else changes. You never know. But I really do believe that this is a very big leap. So I would not be supporting this at this time.
Anybody else?
I would just bring up the investment-backed expectations. So this property is probably being purchased for a significant discount because of all these impairments. But yet, it's still useful. It's still enrolled in the 490 Forests program. It still has a use. It's being priced accordingly, likely. You get what you pay for, and that's doctrine that's gone all the way up to the Supreme Court of the United States, that you can't expect a million-dollar parcel from a $20,000 parcel.
Anybody else? I'm struggling with the fact that they're not combined. We've done this in the past. We've made them combine their properties. That's good practice, I think, to have. Because once you combine them, some of the variance goes away. You know, we're not varying two properties, you're varying one property. You're limiting what you're actually varying. And I, you know, I think there might be other ways around this than just handing out variances. And I think it needs to be looked at, explored a little bit more, and figured out, you know, even if it's not necessarily for one applicant, cost-effective, it might be cost-effective for another applicant to do something with it. But I don't believe that we should hand out variances just because they're asked for. And I don't see that that's the only way to use these properties. So, anybody else?
My final comment is, in our own zoning rules, it says we should be in harmony with the general purposes. And this would not be doing that. And it's a minimum adjustment that we're looking for. And this is a very large adjustment.
Okay. Anybody else? Nothing? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions?
Okay, what are we doing? Try again?
You made a motion in the affirmative.
Right, so...
The motion was in the affirmative, so you got a...
So if you vote in favor of this, you're passing it.
Correct.
And if you vote against it, you're not passed because it was made in the affirmative. Okay. Can we just try it one more time?
Sure. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign? Aye? Any abstentions?
One, two, three.
So it's been denied 5-0.
I saw three. Okay, thank you.
Officially close the public hearing? Mr. Chairman, I don't...
I get confused because of the yes with the no.
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe you actually closed the public hearing. Could you just do that, please, for the record? I don't hear it either.
Sorry.
Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So the reason for the denial, does anybody want to? It is more than a minimum adjustment? You're right, and the consolidation of lots?
Right, the consolidation of lots. Sounds like it could have easily been accomplished before coming at us. Yeah, it's crazy.
This is more than a minimum adjustment in the consolidation of lots could have been accomplished prior to the meeting. Is that reasonable?
And possibly not all aspects of properties were looked at.
Okay. Okay, you sign, and it goes back this way. Rachel, do you have a copy of the, I mean, sorry, Raquel, do you have a copy of the minutes folder, so when we get to that? I have it.
I think I have to go upstairs. It's not at your desk. Some people are unprepared, but I can...
I don't have it. Maybe we want to take a second and get that at some point so we have it when we get to that part. Any lifesavers or something in there? All the junk we carry.
Mr. Chair, are you doing a recess?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Shuffling papers.
You're fine.
Will the applicant for prospects please come forward?
My name is David Weeks, and I live in 56 Fields Drive in East Long Meadow, Mass. As you can see, we're trying to get quite a bit of variances here. And this piece of property, have all of you seen this piece of property?
Yes.
It was owned by a guy by the name of Cerner many years ago. He didn't pay his taxes. So Peter Bryant, and everybody remembers Peter, about a couple of years ago, we went down with the engineers, and went down to the estate, and we got a grant for, I don't know how much money, but quite a bit of money, to clean that up. But the town didn't own it at the time, so they took the land in lieu of taxes. And that only happened in the last three, four, five, six months, I think, okay? So the town, you know, we got together, and I said, I'll buy it, but, you know, we've got a few situations here. Because, you know, it's Kelly for that lumber, and it butts Kelly for that lumber, as well as the street, as well as the railroad. And we operate a building material company. We need to be able to move material. We need to be... And we're going to build a building, as you can see on your plan there. We're going to build... That is, if passed tonight, then we would design the building we really need on what we have here. So, as you know, the piece is dirty. It's dirty all the way around, and it has to be cleaned up. And one of the things is, if you approve this, then we design the topography of the land on where we would pave and where we would build a building.
Excuse me, Mr. Weeks. It's very possible that the public can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you just lean in a little bit?
Okay.
Because everybody does watch us.
Okay, do they really watch this?
Is the red light on on the mic?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, and so, since it's dirty, and it's got a certain topography to it, we have to work with the engineers once we decide exactly what we want to do, so we can get the topography correct, so they can correct the pollution that is in there. And as you can see, it drops off about eight to 10 feet there, I think. Okay? And so we have to deal with that, as well as putting that retaining wall. Reason that retaining wall is there is for... It drops off quite a bit from Kelly for that all the way down to the thing. And then we'll build our building, and we'll go from there. It'll also be fenced in. But we need to have it all paved, because we get trucks, we get storage, it'd be a storage building. We get no parking. We don't need any parking over there, because customers don't go there. They go in the store, if you've ever been in there. And they might go over there for something strange. I don't know, but not often. So that's why we need this variance to continue with this project, and then buy it from the town and design something to go back to P and Z that we can do. Any questions, or are you...
Any questions?
Really, what you're doing is you're taking this piece of property, and you're just kind of absorbing it into your existing business.
Yeah, it butts our property. I mean, we're going to...
It's right there.
Right there.
And it would be a benefit.
And it's a very small piece of property. It's like $37,000, so for an industrial zone, it's hard to live within the realm of the thing.
Any other questions?
I just have one quick one. So the capping of the soil, you're sure that that's all you'll need to do, or do you still have more environmental work to do there?
I'm not an engineer, but if you're 80, 90% sure that's all they're going to have to do, is cap it. But they might have to move it to make the topography right for the building and the use. You know what I mean? But it would be capped.
Yeah.
And they've said they would cap it, and I don't see... Has anybody ever walked that? There's a bunch of structures on it. There's, you know, it's... They have to remove these... There's cement structures. It used to be an old coal yard. They got the three silos there. They got the cement things in the ground. So what's in the ground, I don't know, but that would have to be taken out if there was anything there, in my opinion.
When you're saying "they..."
The person who cleans it up.
Gotcha. It's not...
Right.
So you're going to get it when this all...
Right. If you approve this, I go in agreement with the town to buy it.
Right.
And then I work with the engineers, and they... We decide what we're going to do, and then they put out the bid to clean it up.
Right.
And then I build my... Then I come back and get my...
So when you get it back...
Right. We don't know what we're going to have to build.
And they'll also know what they had to do to get it there.
Right.
Right. And so it's really a win-win.
It's a win for the town. It's a win for us, because we need the land. Our taxes, you know, we'll spend quite a bit of money in building, so the town will win, but we're breaking a few rules, as you can see.
No, you're asking for variances.
Right.
No rule breaking.
That's all we're doing.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Yep.
Anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor or against? You're all that's left, huh?
Everybody left.
All right, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We close the public hearing this time. Any discussion?
Just for the board's edification, we have to do each one of these individually, so then we'll read it, and move it, and vote, and all that stuff, okay? Actually, as far as I'm concerned, this is a total win-win for the town of Enfield. Take a piece of property that's been a problem, take advantage of a brownfield grant. It's a total win.
I was just going to add that you have a contaminated site, and that's the hardship, so it's very clear that we have to grant some relief so that they can clean up the contamination.
Yeah, and some of this, even though it seems like it would be harsh granting a variance around a residential area, it's really not. They've already got a business there. It's taking that parcel of land that's contaminated and making it useful just to expand their business a little bit.
Right. And that site is mostly paved and...
Right. So it's not going to impact the residential area any more than business, his business has already done there.
I think we look much better than the residential area, by the way. Just between me and you.
Yeah.
But it's getting better down there. They're starting to clean it up down there pretty good.
Good. Anything else? All right.
Mr. Chair, I would just say, if you wanted, if everybody was in agreement, that you wanted to disapprove all of those that are on the record. I don't think you have to go through and read each one, but if there's questions about any one, then I would certainly have that discussion.
Well, I would entertain a motion to combine them.
I make a motion to combine all of them.
Second. Made by Mary Ann, seconded by Charlie. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Should she read all of them out at one time, and then we'll vote on all of them?
Can we make a motion to waive the reading?
Yeah, I think so.
I make a motion to waive the reading.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Made by Mary Ann, seconded by Charlie. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. So we've waived the reading of the variances. Can you just go through real quick and...
There are 10 variances.
Okay.
And I'll just give you... I may be able to just give you the section, and then they'll be on the record.
Okay.
That sounds good.
So, the first one is Section 6.10.1 lot and bulk requirements. Second one is Section 6.10.2 additional setback and buffer requirement subsection A. Section 6.10.2 additional setback and buffer requirement subsection B. Section 6.10.2 additional setback and buffer requirement subsection C. Subsection 6.10.2 additional setback and buffer requirement subsection D. Section 6.30.2 activities limited to enclosed buildings and limited outdoor storage provisions. Section 10.10.2 parking standards. Section 10.10.7 parking area setbacks and landscaping standards to vary subsection A. Section 10.10.7 parking area setbacks and landscaping standards subsection B. And subsection... Section 10.20 landscaping standards subsection 4.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I second.
Made by Mary Ann, seconded by Charlie. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0.
You're all set, Mr. Weeks. You'll get a letter.
By the way, can I add something? Those two girls are very good. They helped me out a lot in this. And I think they help you out a lot to answer questions you might not know. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you.
Take it.
Bye-bye.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
It wasn't here, so I can't do it. Neither was Charlie.
I'll make the motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Abstentions, none?
Accurate.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Abstentions.
Yeah, abstentions.
Abstentions?
Staying.
All right. Passes. Two abstentions. Now, we're going back to new business, old business. We'll wait... We'll give Raquel a minute. She's left the room.
She was just... Raquel was just informing me that she thought this was going to be tabled, since we had not received the legal opinion yet. Were you waiting on that?
Bylaws?
That's... Yeah.
Yeah, if she's not received...
We could go through and see if there's anything. You've already been through these? Is that right?
If she's still waiting, then I'd rather just table it and get what she's looking to get.
How do we know that?
I mean, there's certainly been some modifications.
Well, we'll give her a minute until she gets back.
Yeah, she's just getting the minutes for you. And I know one thing that probably will need to change is, for instance, in Article 4 under membership, the very last sentence, we're talking about terms of office, and it says, "who will then forward same to chairman of the town council of the community." So I think things go to town manager that goes to the town council, so... And same with vacancies. That's at Article 7, Section 4. Vacancies in offices shall be filled as soon as possible by vote of the regular members, and so on, but that really is filled by town council. So I'm sure that the attorneys will pick up on that.
Are we still waiting for the attorney's report? So we're just tabling this?
Yeah.
Very good.
Do I have a motion to... I don't need a motion, right? We just keep it on the table?
Yeah, it's just tabled.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have some things in my notebook, so I'm just doing my homework here. Hold on. Keep going.
Staff correspondence, staff reports.
Did they get any correspondence? I don't think so.
We don't have any pending applications for the zoning board of appeals. We're still working on the bylaws actively. The forms have been sent down to the town attorney for them to review for their, you know, legal advice on what you guys agreed to at the last meeting.
So are you telling us we need to hang on to this next set of bylaws?
Yes.
Okay. I still have the last set. Okay. Keep going.
You said you had things in your binder?
One thing.
Okay. Word, other business.
We haven't had an update on the Antia Group, which is the contaminated soil remediation over by Smith Dairy. They're supposed to come in every year and tell us what's going on with that. It was ZBA 2013-10-04. So could you get that back? Could you put that on... Raquel, could you put that on the agenda for next month?
I actually think there's a new company out there again.
But could you repeat that number? ZBA 2013...
And if you could put it on the agenda, even if you have no information?
Yeah.
Just let's put it on, so we can have it rolling till we get an update. Because the gas station across the street is still vacant, and I don't know if there's any plans out there, so we should keep an eyeball on it. Thank you.
Anything else?
That was it.
That was it. You have a form sheet going around to sign for the last variance?
Oh, you think you want to do that?
I might want to make it legal.
Jeez. Sorry about that. I got so tied up writing 10 of them.
Do we have to sign all 10 of them?
Yes.
You do?
I think so.
Well, then we have...
Do we have to sign all 10 of these, because we put them together?
I would, just...
Yeah. I think you need to.
Vote in the affirmative.
I'm going to stamp.
This initial signifies...
I'm going to start writing like Charlie.
Just make an X.
Would have been something. I put it in the wrong place.
You see that in a lot of the old deeds, where somebody didn't know how to read or write, you know? Just say his mark.
Checkmarked it.
To add, August ZBA agenda. Do we have a meeting in August, or is that canceled?
That's off.
So we're into September.
Well, if you have an application that comes forward, let us know.
Right, we'll meet.
Yeah, we'll accommodate if needed.
We've always said we don't want to make the customer wait. Can come in, we'll come in.
A regular August meeting date.
It would be a third...
Yes, yeah.
The fourth. Or we're changing to the fourth. Supposing the bylaws. The fourth Monday of the month. Is it an extra Monday?
Let's see if we pass the bylaws. It's the last Monday of the month.
I kind of like it it's the last Monday of the month.
Me too. I don't remember us discussing...
I never have to count Mondays. I just say, "Okay, there it is."
I don't remember us talking about that, so I'm...
If you look at the bylaw changes...
It's proposed in there for the fourth Monday, so it's consistent throughout, because we were going to run into scheduling conflicts where we might have ZBA at one point, and then wetlands on the same week, and at the time, planning and zoning. So that's why we proposed making it consistent fourth Monday of the month, because that's typically the last Monday.
It's only not the last Monday of the month, three months out of the year or something.
Consistency.
So, yeah, it's not a problem. All right. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We're adjourned.